All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Monday, May 2nd at 6:00 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chad Sexton, Dr. Anian, President.
Teresa A. Moss, President.
And Veronica Calle, President. And I should say I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:03 PM.
Okay, one or more of you needs to mute yourself because there's a tremendous echo happening.
Okay, who's muting?
That sounds much better.
Okay, all right. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded by TCAM and will be put up on YouTube. Chairman's additions or deletions. The only thing I have is an announcement about the Walk Bike and Roll Safe Routes to School program. On Wednesday, May 4th, the Hawthorne Brook and the Spalding Memorial School will be meeting, I think it's 7:30 in the morning, for Hawthorne Brook and 8 o'clock for Spalding at the Rec Center for a walk to school as part of the Safe Routes to School program. So we've been trying hard to get that rolling. I see Carol Hofstes is here in the audience, and she was our planning board contact for that most recently, so.
I believe they're planning a all-day bike rodeo.
Oh, for later in the year?
In the future. I know she was talking to Rachel.
Oh. Aimed this way, okay. Well, if people didn't hear that, Carol said that they are planning a bike rodeo day?
I believe that's what she's calling.
For later in the year, and I will be putting the, I just got this today, I'll be putting this up on the website. And it is Wednesday, so, is the walk to school. And I'm sure if you contact Emmy or Bonnie, if anybody wants to participate or to chaperone, they would be glad to have you. So, all right. On the agenda, we have no appointments. Our only meeting business today is to review the ATM budget. And so I'm going to turn over to Ross for the most recent updates. And Dave, do you, should we screenshot that, Ross? I have it on my computer, but I could email it to Dave. Dave, are you there?
Yes, I am.
I don't know how to set it co-host, so I'm going to. Dave, I'm going to email you the latest budget.
Hang on one second.
And if you could pop it up, that would be great.
Okay, go ahead and do that.
Okay, hold on one minute. It's the budget and the recap worksheet. And it's going to your TCAM email.
Okay.
Right now. We have it hard copy. I don't think I have any.
I have two hard copies.
Oh. With the audience?
I have a hard copy.
Yeah, that would be great.
I have an extra one too.
Oh.
I had already printed it.
Oh, and there's a third one here. If somebody would like it, there's another one here. And Ross, here's the, here's another one. Thank you.
Is the budget different than the one that was online today?
Yes, yes, it is. It's dynamic.
It will probably change between now and tomorrow night.
Oh, it's a 5-2 version. That would be great.
So Dave, do you have it?
Yes, I do. I'm getting it in position.
Okay.
And which one do you want first?
What do you want to do, Ross?
Why don't we start with the recap first? Let it work.
Okay, the recap first, Dave. Thank you.
One second then.
When you have the recap sheet up, let me know.
Okay, it's up now.
Do you want me to let you into the Zoom? Are you good? You're good? Where should I put this so that you can be heard?
At the top of the recap sheet is a number that's highlighted in black. That's where the budget was this afternoon at about 3:45, showing $24,932,533. That was after the slash and burn that we talked about last Wednesday. And then we made some more changes today. We found some numbers that weren't quite right for the trash contracts. We were able to deduct from the overall budget $17,888, which was making progress. At the selectmen's meeting, we found another $2,000 we were able to take out of another account. So these numbers are shifting as we go. Walked into the finance committee meeting, and we had a deficit down the bottom of that screen. It's in red for the folks that have color, so Dave, yeah, keep going down. And down, and down. There you go. Stop right in that gray box showing the available tax levy one. But that's the amount that we're allowed to raise taxes every year. Well, we're, according to that sheet, with $55,786 over that. We have done some cutting since then. And with the sheets that you don't have, that number is now down to $50,786. So the deficit is getting smaller. The deficit when I started a few months ago was over $800,000. And with a lot of cutting and some improved revenue numbers, we're making changes. But we still have a $50,000 deficit we need to account for. Or hope the voters will agree to a stabilization funding or free cash funding to rectify. I think we went through most of the big budget changes last week. In my mind, it's the select board that will decide first what budget you want to propose and have moved tomorrow night. I assume it's the revised budget versus the original budget that had the $362,000 deficit. So it will be a motion to approve the budget as handed out at town meeting tomorrow. Do you want to then eventually move to fund the deficit with stabilization? And if that should fail, try again with free cash? Or do we continue cutting? Piece that's unknown at this point is I've been advised that the school committee is meeting probably 7 o'clock or 6 o'clock tonight. They're meeting as we're here tonight. And they are considering a lower assessment number. I think the lower assessment number will cover this current deficit, maybe some more. So if we get that new number, obviously we'll factor that in. The question is then, do we then restore some of the things we cut? Or do we move forward with the revised slash and burn budget? And not use everything that's available?
So what you're saying is hypothetically, they could come back with a lower assessment that we would then be able to fund the original budget that we?
I don't believe it would be that much of a lower assessment.
Okay.
I'm, I hate to estimate a number, but I think it will be $75,000 to $100,000 lower assessment.
Right, so what I'm. We still have some work to do then.
Well, we're at a $50,000 deficit now. If we get 75 or more back from the school, then we've got, at least we have a balanced budget.
As it stands right now. Correct, yeah.
And we've made some painful cuts, so the question is, do we let those painful cuts stand, or do we try to restore some of the cuts? And bring it up to close to even?
Well, I have one question. What is the process for restoring cuts? If we vote a budget, and then they come back and say it's different, what is the process for? In other words, I would assume we would need a special town meeting to bring forward a new budget based on the new revenue that we have. Is that correct?
So a town meeting will pass, hopefully tomorrow night, not Wednesday night, but hopefully tomorrow night, they set numbers for each functional group, if not each line item. And that's what the town has held to until there's another town meeting to allocate additional funds, if that's what happens.
Teresa, go ahead.
Basically, my question, what's the process? And because I think it's so convoluted, if we get that number early, is there a possibility that we could say, if the number comes in, we want to restore A, B, and C tonight, and present $1,000 on this tomorrow on the town floor, so that we don't have to have all the arguments on the town floor tomorrow night?
Yes. So I think what you're saying is if you vote to give me instructions that says if we have some more revenue through a reduced school assessment, one, restore everybody to 3% versus the people that went to 0 or 1, two is to restore cut hours?
No.
Okay.
Two would be to restore?
That's why, that's why we're having this discussion.
Two would be, for me, I don't know about the rest of you guys, two would be to restore streetlights.
Yeah.
That would be where I would go. After that, I think I would go to restoring public safety salaries that are coming out of ARPA.
That would be my number two.
I think that is a good idea. I suggest that there probably won't be enough money to do that. All of that anyway. So maybe you need to prioritize.
So what I would not do is add in the additional cuts that the fire department so graciously offered. I would not put those in there. I would keep the $50,786 number for the deficit. In other words, stop now with the budget that we have. That's what I think. So in which case, the public safety numbers are the new position in the fire department and the two patrol officers who were not hired that we're funding with ARPA. I would restore one of those. It depends on the number. And here's the other thing. So are we talking just about order for restore? Okay, so after that, where do we go?
I think each of those positions is probably close to $70,000 for rough numbers, so I think that will quickly use up.
What we have.
What we get back.
So, so related to this is, do we, so they come back and they say, okay, we're giving you 75 or 100,000. Do we say, oh, great, yeah, we're not, we're not recommending the school budget? Because we want not only that, but we also want any new revenue that comes in for Chapter 70 or transportation to be distributed proportionately to all the towns.
I believe that will be
Part of it.
Part of the vote tonight is that any additional state aid comes back to the towns in front of assessments.
Okay, say that again, because that's not what I heard. But if that's indeed what's happening, then.
Well, I've talked to one or two committee members, so obviously they're not speaking for the full committee. But my understanding from those two committee members and from the superintendent is that they are planning that any additional state aid will come back as reduced assessments. It's not final until it's voted, so I, I don't mean to put them on the line because, but that was what I thought I heard them say, so.
Okay, because my concern has been and continues to be that if we if the current budget that's submitted to us gets approved, and they do get state aid, they do have increased Chapter 70 and transportation, according to what has been approved by the House of Representatives and is going into the Senate, if that does get approved, I want to make sure that we are going to be getting some of the money back.
I would expect the Pepperell would get there.
Yes.
We would get ours and Ashby would get theirs.
Correct.
In the same proportion that it goes.
Towns' share is just over 40%.
Right.
40.12% or something.
So. So anyway, if we're going to restore. Okay, so let me ask another question. If, if we hear tonight, so is what, what you heard? I missed that.
That, the funds when they came in would come back.
Okay, all right.
Well, not that they would come back, that they were voting on it.
Yes, exactly. Okay. So are we going to, for these, assuming we get enough to restore, so we get enough to meet the $50,786. We know that it's between 12,000 and 15,000 to restore the 3%. So say we get 100,000. 12 to 15K would do that. 7,000 would be the streetlights. So where do we go after that?
We said we are not using.
Not using the ARPA funds? So just. Because nothing will be on a nice line at that point.
Correct. Sorry?
Nothing will be enough to say, okay, it'll be like half of the salary. It won't be a full salary. But we could say less for ARPA, reduce that line on public safety. And if we don't take the additional cuts that fire agreed to, then I would restore police first because those are existing positions that just haven't been hired. That's what I would do. Are you guys in agreement?
I'm okay with that.
And I don't expect that we'll have more than that until we see if the revenue gets passed on, at which point that's for special town meeting in the fall.
Correct.
To, you know, to do whatever, add hours. I would go with the adding back in the requested, first ARPA, take care of those salaries, and then go to adding back in requested hours that we denied.
I don't need to worry about that part.
No, you don't.
Can this change?
That's what hours were kind of missed, though.
We had requested additional hours in land use, requested administrative assistant hours in highway, in accounting. There were a lot of them all over the place. Oh, facilities.
Facilities.
I thought you were talking about closed hours.
No, 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 no. We haven't closed anybody. We, we were thinking, oh, no, oh, no. But if the, if public safety would go for ARPA, then we wouldn't have to close anything. And so they agreed. And so we don't have to go there until next year, when we need to be thinking override or a change in trash pickup in this town. So, because we pay 700, we pay double what we asked for in the override for trash pickup alone in one year. So things will need to change.
I imagine I also would not be in support of restoring the hours at this point.
Not at this point, no. But in the fall, if we, depending on how things fall out.
If what I see happens with the Chapter 70 funding and the transportation, if that indeed comes through the way it looks like it's, if it passes the Senate, I think we might be able to.
So I will, I will say that we did not reduce anybody's hours. We just did not go for the increased hours that were requested. So the, if it was an increase in hours that was not administrative assistant hours, they were cut. They were not
Approved.
Approved, I should say. For all the administrative hours, they were all cut in half. The additional requests for hours, they were cut in half because we do need the administrative hours. We've been hurting for a long time in this town on administrative hours. So it's needed. Anyway, everything was needed. Everything we asked for in the original budget was needed.
Yes.
So, all right, so the, there has been, I just want to go through each, so have we done enough on the recap, do you think, Ross?
Yes, I mean, the recap is the bottom line as far as where we are from a tax levy perspective. Everything else flows to that.
So the number is 50,786. So can we go through the numbers that we voted last week and vote them with the changes? Because we were 75 in the hole just a few days ago. All right, so under Board of Selectmen, we, that has not changed. FINCOM has not changed. What did change was in accounting, line 37, we dropped that 3K, correct? 3,000. So the, on line 37, it's 15,652. So in other words, the request didn't translate into this budget.
Gotcha. 15,652.
652 is where we're settling there. So that's a 3,000 drop on that 126,902 on line 47.
So it's 123,902.
So, and we had approved that, correct? I think we did it under general government.
Yes.
Okay, so the Board of Assessors stays the same, the treasure collector stays the same. Jump in there, though, Ross, if I miss one. Legal total stays the same, the management information stays the same, town clerk stays the same, elections stays the same. It was 24 580 is what I have. I see 24555. Why?
That's what it added up, right?
Okay, so I made a mistake. Very possible. I thought the only thing we added back.
Because we added back the
$50.
$50 for the travel because of the three elections they were given versus one.
So from 24580, it goes to?
No, it was 24505, and it went to 24555. And that's what's in here. That's correct. Okay. And then registrars is 2320, the street listings 4488, the conservation is 43504, MRPC 3227, Planning Board, this is line 180, 28132. The next plan.
Me, me, yeah.
Yeah, Planning Board.
29.
Oh, wait, 29932. I was doing the salaries, yep. 29932, CBA 5626. And then land use, we have a change there.
Land use, line 205, we cut $1,000 out of that. That's professional and technical services.
Okay.
And they, so they, so far have not been using that number this year, so taking $1,000 out seemed to be.
Okay, so we're at 67182.
So we appreciate your contribution.
67182.
Right. No, we voted at 68. Facilities, we dropped that because professional services contract, we dropped that an additional 2,000. I had subtracted a smaller amount than what the contract actually is. So it's under facilities total. What, what do you have there now, Ross?
It still shows the same.
We just changed this.
For facilities total, it should be 285,195.
Right.
That was a change that happened in the last half, last hour.
Okay, so we dropped general government by 5,000? Is that right?
I have 1,679,133.
Okay, so can we have a vote on to accept that for general government?
I move, we accept general, what's the number now? I move, we accept general budget at 1,679,133.
Is there a second?
Any seconds?
Are those in favor?
669.
And Veronica Calle, yes. And I think everything else is exactly the same, isn't it?
Police number I gave you last week for 246 was 620,000.
What do you have for the police total now?
Line 276 is 1,647,773.
That's exactly what we had last time.
1,647,773.
Yeah. I will tell you that to get to that, this, I reduced line 246 down to 620,000. On my estimate, the chief gave me a number today that's 626,000. I chose to keep it the lower number because one, we're trying to get lower numbers, and two, I think the number's big enough that $6,000 difference is not going to make or break that deal.
Right.
But I wanted you to know that that's lower than what he submitted.
The other thing is that these numbers were calculated at 3%, and by contract, it's 2.75%?
Well, by contract, it's no contract.
It's no contract. That is true, because they're out of contract.
And we're still holding in those numbers the 3% based on the negotiations, so.
Okay, all right. It's fine.
We're in good faith.
We are, okay.
Good faith and sense of that was our goal to do for everybody.
Correct.
All right, so the police number we voted last time is the same number. All right, and what, and fire, I think, is the same as well.
About $43,000 in, I will say, reduced costs by transferring to ARPA. We're holding that off based upon what we hear from the schools. I will note in fairness to the chief that that was against his better judgment because he feels that he doesn't want to have those positions subject to losing ARPA next year. All valid concerns. But my explanation to him was, well, you, if we don't make these transfers, we may not get them this year. if we don't make these transfers, may not get them this year. You run the risk of losing them next year. If you so, I think they're better off to get them now when they need them, but we're not making that last ARPER right now. Oh. I want to thank the chief for his effort to work on that.
That's substantial.
Um, communication stays the same. I think everything else is the same. I think, oh, except trash. But, okay, so let's just go through everyone. So two hundred eighty-two thousand.
What you can say they're all the same, the only one's going to change is
One, five, fifty-five or something like that?
Schools will potentially change tonight, I assume you'll be okay with voting a lower number, school gives us a lower number. It maybe still leaves on the table whether you recommend voting against the school number or not. If they do lower it.
If they come back with lower and passing on everything, what do you guys think?
I want to see the cards.
Yeah, we need to see the cards.
You can make that vote tomorrow night at town meeting.
Before, before the meeting?
Yeah, we have a meeting before.
We have a meeting before.
We have a meeting before the meeting, but you can discuss things at town meeting. And you can make them.
Recommendation.
You can speak individually, or you can speak as a board if you all get together and nod your heads or shake them together.
We didn't before the meeting.
Yeah, we are.
Um. As a budget person, I will submit that the school has done a lot to reduce their budget down to a low level. Certainly compared to where they were before and certainly on par or if not the same cut as where you missed besides. I mean, I think we're all in this together, we need to share this, the pain together. And I will submit that they've done that this year, at least they will if they vote the way we hope they will tonight.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but the you know, I'm hearing what people were complaining about is that, one, it's significantly, it's not a large increase, it's significantly more than a lot, just fifty-five percent of our budget. And this is now in a school that we don't, using the gyms, we're not using the tracks, we're not using, so there's some negativity. Just threw that out there.
Um.
Let it stick where it sticks.
That's fine, that's why you folks will vote, the rest of the people will vote tomorrow night.
Okay, so public safety total, three million, five hundred, three thousand sixteen.
Yep.
And that's what we voted last time, so that one's okay. Um, education total, where, you know, we voted.
I thought you voted not to support.
We voted not to support it, right, and the number hasn't changed. Alright, highway. We've left highway um, as is. Uh, same with snow and ice. Um, and streetlights, we cut in half. So we have a highway and streets total of seven hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-nine, which we voted last time. Alright. So moving on to solid waste.
Solid waste.
Um, except the next thing?
I got ahold of the solid waste contract. There were some numbers that were inadvertently entered for FY twenty-three, backing those out that saves, that reduces that line item seventeen thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. It's appreciated.
The contract that Mr. Shanken, I think?
I don't have anything with your signature. Unless, unless yours is the squibble.
No, that is Wayne Miller, and that is an invalid contract.
Contract.
It's not clear to me that we have a signed trash contract in this town. I will just throw that out there. Needless to say, they've been picking up the trash, trash, and we've been paying them.
Mm-hmm. Well, and, and paying them per at least the unsigned contract.
Right. Unless I got email from Adam.
It won't be easy to find ways to reduce that. And I would not choose one to recommend dropping the contract quickly.
I would not drop it for FY twenty-three. But I would say that the town needs to think about what FY twenty-four looks like.
From
So let me ask, if you don't have a signed contract, you don't think you have a signed contract, what prevents you from going out for new bids? Or trash?
I'm a process.
Potentially nothing. There is potentially nothing. This contract came in, they were the only ones that, Shaw's is the only one that quoted a flat rate per town, where others quoted a tonnage, so much per ton. My understanding is if we were paying so much per ton, the bill last month would have been ten thousand dollars more for just that month. The perception, certainly the belief from the Board of Health is that they got a very good deal then. And
So you want to just keep?
I'm, I'm not saying that. I mean, I think anything with a number in front of it is worth negotiating. Anything with almost three quarters of a million dollars attached to it is definitely worth negotiating.
The Shaw's, they, they haven't ended on the contract?
Well, it's three years. So this is FY twenty-three is the second year of a three-year contract. But there was something that came back in response to the RFP, and that was what was signed. Then there's another contract, although we cannot exactly I, I shouldn't even go into this.
Okay.
It's um
So you're saying that next year is, is what would be the third year of the three-year contract?
No, next year is the second year of, the, the FY twenty-three is the second year, FY twenty-four is the third year.
So in FY twenty-four, you would be directing an RFP to go out for a new contract?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think the town should be looking at different ways to handle our trash. Um, whether it's a transfer station or an every other week pickup or because we spend roughly twice, little more than twice of what we asked for on an override in trash pickup. And I know that trash pickup is a serious issue in this town, but um, I, I, where do we get revenue from otherwise? Um, and there you have it. So I just think that for next year, I we keep this as is, even though it would be wonderful to have those funds, we keep it as is. And then we think about the third year of the contract, and certainly when the contract is over. What does trash pickup look like in Townsend is the question. And we go from there. So.
That's one of, that's one of my um things to look at in the coming year, is the trash.
Are you the Board of Health liaison?
No.
This Board of Health? Really? I wasn't the Board of Health liaison.
Was I, am I?
That's what I was, I have my list right here.
Oh, yes, I am the Board of
Your elected boards, your Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
So I am looking.
You are looking at it.
I mean, there's clearly a lot of issues associated with this, there's a lot of we're getting a reasonable deal. I mean, seven thousand, about seventeen thousand dollars, right?
So that and the five thousand from general government is what dropped the seventy-five that we were at, at our last meeting in the hall to the fifty thousand in the hall. Those two things together, so.
So so, solid waste total should be seven hundred forty-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars.
Mm-hmm, so we need a revote on this. So is there a motion?
Forty-eight, zero, five, six.
And is there a second?
Second.
Yes, all those in favor?
Just six and three, any of those?
Two, three, one, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Alright, thank you. Alright, cemetery and parks, I don't think that has changed.
That last one's there, but that's a hundred sixty thousand, six twenty-three.
Okay. Um, Dave, if you're there, could you pop up the um, budget, please? I just thought of that, that what's on the screen is the recap and we're looking at the budget now.
Okay, yep, I didn't know if you wanted me to change it, give me a second.
I didn't think of it till just now. So if you could put that up there. We're a, a round line, um
Six oh one Board of Health.
Six oh one Board of Health.
One second.
So I know we voted on it, but I'm just curious about the follow-up this week. We voted an additional ten thousand dollars to move the warranty back, right?
Yes.
Did, we hear any feedback from anybody of that sort?
No, not yet, but I didn't hear anything negative. So typically, if it's a no, you hear the negative. So, but we will confirm that.
From the Parks and Cemetery?
From Parks and Cemetery. So what we did last week was add six thousand under temp help. And we added two thousand under groundskeeping supplies and vehicular supplies. So. So that was line five eighty roughly. Alright, so now we're going to Housing Authority Board of Health on next page.
There's no changes on that.
Okay, no change on Shoba Board of Health, no change on landfill engineering.
So Dave, we're clicking down to line six twenty and still moving.
Alright, one second. Oops. Six twenty?
Yep. There's no change on that line. No change on the landfill line of six twenty-six. And then rolling down to council on aging at six forty-four. Uh, line six forty-four, no change there. Um, Veterans Agent, no change there. And so for Human Services total, we have five hundred seventeen, one ninety-nine, which is exactly what we voted last time, so we're good to go there.
Do you want to skip over library, or you want to?
Oh yeah, we're skipping.
Us library people were not into like, who's pressure? We just help people out, you know?
So library total is what we had last week, four oh five, five, six?
Six.
Six.
Can I discuss? It should be quick. It'll be quick, yeah, it's gonna be quick.
Go ahead.
Um, are you gonna, uh there of the library customers, yeah, we, we just met and we signed the contract, so library director line is correct. We um, also, as we discussed, and, and BLT has told us, we, if we, we are cutting the amount that you have asked us to cut, we would like to change what the cut is coming from.
I would um, suggest that you call Ross tomorrow and discuss it. Is that okay with you?
Let's, let's wait.
Okay.
If it's the same total of the other line?
It's actually a little less. I think it's like a hundred more to us.
Alright, we'll take it.
Okay.
So do that.
Awesome, perfect, I'll have Stacy's
Alright.
Final numbers tonight, okay?
In the same format as the underspots.
Absolutely.
Just so I can
I'll send it to you right when I get home, okay? Okay?
Alright, that sounds good.
Perfect.
So, alright, um so you're making it a hundred dollars less?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the exact, I can, do you want me to tell you right now?
Um.
Put your mouth, we give it to you, Ross.
Tomorrow's fine.
Tomorrow's fine.
Probably, it's like
Alright, so we um, we will keep then, so we're going to keep it exactly as it is right now. Okay. You know what, it would be really nice if you could keep that number exactly the way it is. And, but tell Ross where the changes are, but
Absolutely.
I mean, as far as voting goes.
It doesn't change the vote.
Doesn't change the vote?
I can make it exactly the same. We just cut friends clean, so that's why it was really different.
I see.
But I mean, I, I don't think there's a problem with you voting your number that's a hundred dollars higher than you may end up with.
Okay, alright, just so it's, yeah, yeah, yes, yes. Okay.
And, and it will be town meeting that votes it anyway.
Right.
So that's
Okay.
No vote that counts.
So we're good. Alright. Recreation, we're at the same.
I hope you're going to leave it a vote.
Okay, I just want to say that when we go to restore, it'll be less because we won't have to restore that. Correct. Okay. Alright, um, recreation total, uh, sixty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-eight?
Well, we should discuss that, but yes.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, um nineteen oh six nine, Memorial Day and band concerts?
That, I, I want to say on that particular line item, in going over what was done last year, um, we did add an additional amount to that because of the wall that heals. And um, the ask for that was the same as what they had asked for that.
Who on earth?
What is with you?
Um, could someone mute, please, Andrea, I think it's you.
Yeah, you probably
Someone drinking through a straw.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry.
If you could just mute, thank you.
So if you, if you look at what the budget is and what was cut last year, the, the Memorial Day and bands concerts actually are getting more money this, in this budget than they did last year without the wall that heals.
Because the FY two voted budget was eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
We added five hundred to that at special town meeting in December.
Right.
Because of the wall that heals, because of how the timing fell out. So the five hundred was extra for this fiscal year because the wall that heals was, was in FY twenty-two.
Right.
So we added five hundred. So if we were going to level fund this budget, we should drop five hundred dollars. But instead, we kept it in there and we reduced
Three hundred and eleven or something like that.
Yeah, I, I went with
Thirty-one dollars.
Right, so there's still two hundred more than what they were in their original budget.
And I was going to ask, maybe we add that to our list right after we restore streetlights? We put three hundred thirty-one dollars back into
But we're still five hundred over what we should be.
Exactly, so the, the, what was proposed in front of us last meeting was that we were reducing, but we're not actually reducing, they're still over two hundred dollars ahead of what they were with the budget last year.
Because we don't have the wall that heals, therefore we do not need that extra five hundred. And we have increased the budget by, what is it, one hundred, I don't know, sixty-nine dollars.
Mm-hmm. And I know it's small change, but the flag committee had a cut as well. So we're trying to share the burden.
I've said my piece.
Alright.
Vote.
Okay. So this culture and recreation total, we're good with, correct? We voted that last time and uh
Can I ask what the objection is on the recreation?
My objection, yeah, with the cuts that were having, it's a twenty-five percent increase for that salary and so many objections.
Yeah, why, why is it so high?
I
It came before me, so I'll
I can explain that, so last year, when we increased all the salaries based on contract, you had to have the job descriptions approved. And um, the one job description that did not get approved in the timeframe was this one. But we did approve it in July, and we approved, approved it for the increase that is here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why it's what it is.
Okay.
So it was an increase that was never handed out, when all the other department heads got an increase last?
All departments heads got to get an increase except for that position.
So every department head last year got a twenty-five percent increase? So every department head last year got a 25% increase?
Pretty close.
Close to it, close to it.
Depending on where they were otherwise. So facilities, highway, cemetery and parks. I could probably go through all of them.
And that was before my time, but that was in the, the whole process was to get Townsend wage scales up to be incomparable with what else were.
And also is that there had not been any raises for any town employee for...
Two years prior to me being on the board.
So not even cost of living raises were given out at that particular time.
So that's why. You're welcome. Where are we at? We just did Culture and Recreation, right?
So if that's gonna be the same for the Library, then that understates the same.
Right. And what Ross says is if it's lower, it's okay, correct? So we support that.
Yes.
Okay.
That hasn't changed, retirement hasn't changed. Yellow one, House of Trans Towns here. Because that was one of the changes I made last Wednesday afternoon. Put a little of the white, blue, yellow for...
Where are you at?
Line 730.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, that was last time. Everything else is as-is. So our bottom-line number, which we don't have to vote on, right? And I vote that we keep it at that. You make the library changes tomorrow. But other than that...
And we're still the total that we're looking for free cash for is the $50,786.
Correct.
Yes.
So...
We can try for stabilization first. So I have motions prepared, one to ask the town, the moderator, to ask the voters to take Article eight ahead of Article seven, I think. Which is to move stabilization first.
And we have to have a vote on moving on rearranging.
Yes. And I think it's gonna vote for moderator to do that. And we will put a number into stabilization based upon where we end up. I mean, it could be with the schools, even some of the things we restore, that number is zero, and therefore the question is not needed.
Okay, so if they, if the school committee comes back tonight with a number that, a different number, are we planning to restore these tonight for tomorrow, for the budget that we do tomorrow?
I've been, maybe if you vote, but I've been directed, I thought, by the select board that if we have enough money after we balance the budget to restore everybody to 3%.
First, yes.
If there's still money left to turn back on, the streetlights have proposed to be cut.
Yep.
And if there's still money to take one position for the police department, from ARPA back into the operating budget.
Okay.
If that still leaves money, then we take a portion of one for the firefighter.
Right. And we keep working it that way until we get ARPA funds backed out for salary for existing positions? All right.
And so I anticipate that the recap sheet will not have a red number for tax levy on that, because it will be
Okay.
zero or a dollar or two more.
Okay. And then we have to decide whether or not we're supporting the school budget.
And what is that, a section table?
We'll know tomorrow before town meeting. And our meeting tomorrow is upstairs and stuff, and it's changes.
I will have a new budget sheet. Which hopefully you'll vote, because I gotta start printing a whole mess of them for the town meeting.
Town meeting, I know.
Where are we printing them at? Our good printer upstairs isn't working.
No, but I'm using the tax office.
Oh, good, okay. Yes, that's better.
They told me they're gonna charge you for it, and I said, go ahead and try.
Cross charges.
Right.
Madam Chair?
The school committee numbers before we print them?
Yes.
Okay.
So... So I think that you need a motion from us. Do you need a motion from us to, depending on what comes in, if anything, from the school committee?
I've heard a clear direction, but...
Okay, all right.
If it's the three of you are comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with it. Okay, so we're good.
Madam Chair?
No.
Am I being mad, Madam Chair?
Yes, you are.
Andrea, I don't think we're gonna take input at this point.
It's not input, I just have a question.
Sure.
If at town meeting, somebody makes a motion and it's voted through to restore the budget that was originally submitted, will you take that money then from free cash?
We don't have enough free cash to take it from there. It would have to come from stabilization. We don't have 367 left in free cash.
Right. Stabilization and $15,000 of free cash to fund that budget.
No, I don't mean, that's not what I meant. On individual line items, say if somebody wanted to restore facilities or something. And it was a, you know, I don't know, a $10,000 or $5,000 increase from what your bottom line is, would you take that money from free cash?
No, I, it would come from wherever the funds come from, where the town meeting votes it. In the end, if the number is larger than what we have proposed. And, and then, based on if it's in general government, the Board of Selectmen says, ah, we have $10,000 in general government, and we determine where that comes.
I just thought, direct me, so I'm sure you won't, but I thought when you made a motion like that on the floor, you had a say. I make a motion for $5,000 additional dollars, and you had a say where you wanted to be.
Right, but what I heard from Town Council last week was that it's an increase in the, because we vote general government. So although you can suggest that and vote for it, the increase is in general government. It does not necessarily go to the line item that's voted.
So the funding of this potential increase, which I thought sort of what Andrea was asking, if it still can be done within the levy limit, then it's just raising appropriate, and it happens with the levy limit. Don Hayes and I are planning to keep our spreadsheets on our respective computers, and we'll be adjusting numbers as we go. And if it turns out we're then over the levy limit, one, I think we would try to be able to say so, at least when that last article passes that pushes over it, saying you're now over the levy limit. Folks, you better plan on an Article eight for stabilization or Article seven for free cash, and we would then put in that dollar amount.
Right, what the new number is, correct.
Tonight, that number is $50,786.
Right.
The fun part of town meeting is keeping score as we go.
And... Okay, so can we go on to the warrant? Are we done with the budget, pretty much? We know what we're doing here? Everybody agrees with that?
Yes.
Chaz, are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
That was relatively...
Right. On the warrant, I received a question about the article that has to do with the truck in cemetery and parks, changing the monies. Who is reading that? I guess the question is, do you want cemetery and parks to do it?
If they will do that, I've not had a lot of luck getting other board members...
Pam offered. She wanted to, because she's doing the one for the James H. Tucker Fund or whatever. And she wanted to know if she should read that one as well.
Yes. That would be great, but please, whoever is reading motions, read from the printed motion that I gave you that night.
Yes.
Do not read the warrant. Because the warrant is general and not specific, and has different numbers and different wording. I will have motion books for everybody.
Okay.
And...
That's good, so...
And if you had a motion that you saw this weekend, don't use it. Use what I hand you tomorrow night. Just in case there might be a change.
Something bigger than 12.5.
Yes, I actually printed them so that I could read them. Let me see, what article was?
Just one minute, Carol, let Ross finish.
You want Pam to read the...
I'm not sure what number it is, and I would have to... Now, my, my screen is being viewed, so I can't pull that up, and I don't have a hard copy with me that's current.
Article 16 is... Actually, I've got Chaz down for that, but...
Yes. Haman, H-A-M-A-N.
Okay.
All right. Carol, did you have a question?
Oh, just on these foreign articles that get... I've never been to the meeting. So if the Planning Board submitted it, does that need to make them, the Planning Board has to like read?
That's usually what happens.
Usually what happens, but if you don't, then...
Who do you have for the Planning Board articles? Article 23. That...
It's a bylaw adjustment to a bylaw.
I mean, I just...
And you have something else like draft written on it?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, so things have again changed, but the dog grooming article?
Your liaison would be more than glad to read it for you.
And some of these I put in, I move Article 26 as part of the warrant for something like that. How about the Wetlands, Article 25?
Who do you have on that?
I've got you down for that.
I will read it. Unless someone else wants to read it.
Teresa, I had put Joe's name in here a lot of these, and I realized afterwards, but...
But we said we would change them.
So can I swap? Anything that's blank, I can put your name in for?
Find all.
So are we good? Anything else that we need to cover tonight?
I don't think it needs to be part of the meeting, but I'm trying to get the names so I can contact them.
Did you...
The only ones I were able to find.
Did you look on the town clerks list? Because that's the official list. Let me see what you have. Yeah, if we... Try this.
I'll double-check it tomorrow.
Anyway, these two, you're not gonna get. Energy is Ron Montgomery. I'll send him an email. Capital Planning. Who's Capital Planning? Is that me? Finance Committee is Don Hayes. This is Lisa Struthers. You can look at the webpages.
Okay, and just do it. So there weren't distribution lists, but as long as it goes to the person on that one, that's fine.
That's, yes, that's the contact. Townsend Housing Authority. That would be, who's the chair? Go to Jody, okay? All right.
Okay, but I just wanna make sure it's done.
Abram French, I think this is Renee Fossey. Master Plan. Kim Craven, or is it Planning Board? They didn't reappoint. You're welcome. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn? Unless there's anything else that we need to...
Second that.
708? Oh, yeah. And Chaz, a second. All those in favor?
Justice and Greenies, yes?
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.